Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling, Greg Killwine. Hey Greg.
Hey, hey everybody. We're so glad you're here today.
We are. We also have the incomparable Julian Collins here on our team. What's up you guys?
Hello.
How's it going everyone?
We're thrilled to have you here today and for those of you who are tuning in, let us know where in the world you are. And let us know as of right now, the day we're filming this on April 13th of 2023. Are you actively participating, running for the Kona Challenge? That Young Living is currently running right now, where you can actually win a trip to Hawaii to several different levels. Lots of cool stuff being offered there. One of the ways that you can get additional points for the Kona Challenge is to host in-person events. If you don't know about this, there's definitely some information on the Young Living website. If Greg or someone in the, in the team, if we could get that link in the, from Slack over here, that would be awesome. We have an FAQ. It's from Young Living, just in case you haven't seen it yet. Definitely check it out. That has all of the details. But if you sign up on their form that they've provided and have three in-person events here within the next few weeks, then you can actually earn three additional points, I believe, toward the Kona Challenge. So today we're going to be talking about how you can set yourself up for successful in-person events, including the ones that you would be hosting from home. So if you haven't hosted home events yet, it's something that you absolutely must do at some point. Doesn't matter if it's your favorite thing or not. Every important way to share, you need to have in your back pocket as something that you have at least done once. Cause that's going to make you a better leader for your team long-term. Let's go into the chat and see where everybody is. I am in almost eighty-something degree New York City today. It's flipping hot. We don't have our ACs out yet in the apartment. I'm glad you can't hear the fan. Thank you Zoom. Hello Arizona, Ontario, Boise. Oh, awesome. You're still in the top 300. Congratulations Cindy. That's fantastic. Oklahoma City, eighty-two degree Connecticut. What's up Deb? What's up Buffalo? Hello Amanda. Carolyn's got three events planned. Perfect timing. Fantastic Allentown PA. We've got lovers of hosting events and of course, we've got those of us who are maybe just ready to kind of dip our toes in the water. We're here to make this make sense and be successful for you here today. So I've got some slides for you. We have some exciting stuff to share. So go ahead and turn off your distractions and let's get into it. Team, we're gonna head out a video for our slide quality on the recording. By the way, these recordings do get put up on YouTube when they're done. So please make sure that you are subscribed to the Get Oiling YouTube channel. And of course, you can get updates for when these post. And of course, if you're on our list, you're going to get notified of our replays as they come out. So today we're talking about in-person Young Living events. So this is how you can plan, host, fill those seats. And then of course, follow up and get new customers, you know, because you want to get something out of the work that you've put in, right? So today we first are going to be kicking over to Greg to talk about an exciting new update in our emailing platform. So if you actually use us to send emails and you want to see things like open rates, your percentages of people who click things, all that kind of really important stuff. We've got a really cool visual update that Greg's going to share. Then we're going to talk about how you can host in-person Young Living events that are easy to plan and execute, that people want to attend and actually show up to. And of course, it convert to new customers. And then from there, we do have live help and Q and A. We had someone sign up for a live review today. So we'll be working together there as well. Now, if you are here today looking for help with something, anything, whatever it is, whether it pertains to today's topic or not. If you're live here on the Zoom call, add that question that you have to the Q and A. Our team is here to help you. And if you're watching this as a replay in the future, you'd like to join us on one of these calls. You can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to get on the list and get invited to these live calls. We host every week. This is a 100% free service that we offer to the Young Living community. You don't even have to be a Get Oiling customer to take advantage of what we teach here. Of course, we hope that you'll join us for a dollar for your first month for our most popular plans. But of course, you can get all of this training for free. Now, if you want help on a live call, like someone is going to be receiving today, you can sign up for one in advance. If you want to make sure that next Thursday, for instance, that we are able to give some dedicated space to something that you're working on. You can go to this link, getoiling.com/web site review. And that's going to give you a form to fill out and then we'll take you to a calendar where you can choose which upcoming Thursday you would like to work together. And finally, if you are in the process of getting started with Get Oiling or implementing your dream website or a funnel that you'd like to build or whatever it might be. Or if you just need a hand understanding stuff and having someone walk through these, the stuff with you. You can go to getoiling.com/conceiers to learn more about our incredibly qualified, talented team who can help you with whatever you need getting done on your Get Oiling website. Now head over to the chat and let's hear it. Have you ever hosted an in-home event to share Young Living? So this could be your home, it could be someone else's, but importantly, it's taking place in somebody's house. Have you ever hosted one? Let me know in the chat. Have you? Lots of times I'm seeing and yeses. Awesome. So how did it go for you and what was the setup, right? So when you created or decided to have this event, was it in Essential Oils 101 class? Have you been around for that long with Young Living? Or was it a, you know, what was, was some other kind of theme? Alright, so I'm seeing some yes, but it's been a long time. Awesome. Tell us a little bit about your themes. What are some themes that you may have used with your events? I'm seeing 101, of course, Oils of the Bible. It's a great title, really popular one there. Awesome, awesome. Non-toxic household, fantastic. So the class model, so actually inviting people to classes like, you know, Essential Oils 101 or, you know, lots of stuff like that. That was a really popular way to grow Young Living for a long time. And it's something that has over time fallen a little bit out of favor. Really, I think the primary reason why it did originally was because everybody was kind of using the same model in their market. So if somebody was familiar with an Essential Oils 101 class, maybe they've been invited to one before. You invite them to one, they're not really going to necessarily see the value incoming because they kind of know what they are headed into, right? And so I think that there is a lot to be said for providing education. But what I'm going to be sharing with you today are some simple approaches that you can use to have successful events without having to frame them as you are a teacher expert in front of the room. Because that's actually something in the world of, of network marketing, that's not very duplicable. It's not easy for someone to go after you, who is, you know, maybe signed up from, you know, one of your events to go and try to replicate what they saw you do, if they feel like they have to go up and be the expert, be the teacher, right? So we're going to talk about some ways to set things up so that it's easier for you to execute. And most importantly, it's duplicable. So let's talk about what it means to run home events that really work well. First, of course, we do need a compelling topic or concept. And by compelling, that doesn't necessarily mean compelling to you or to our lovely oily community here, right? It has to be something that's compelling and interesting to the people you're inviting, right? And while we can go deep down the rabbit holes of oily topics and find endless fascination in, in those realms, we have to make sure that what we are presenting, what we're offering, what we are inviting someone to participate in is something that really computes to them as a solid and interesting use of their time. Of course, this also needs to be something that's easy to execute. That's important for you because this needs to be low cost, it needs to be low stress. It needs to be high payout, even if it's not something that necessarily builds your business each time you do it. So easy execution means it needs to be simple, right? And then we need to invite effectively, I'm going to talk a little bit about some key tips that you can follow to make sure that you have good attendance. And most importantly, that your attendance is able to, to be one that's reliable and, and that you can actually get some leverage with. We need easy, high converting, presenting and sharing options. So these need to be things again, that are simple to do, that are easy to show and share. And that actually results in people being curious enough to want to move forward. And then of course, critically, we need our follow-up system. I think that if all of us were to sit down and survey all of the work that we have done throughout our entire course of being brand partners, the number one thing that has kept us from earning the income that we desired to, growing the business to where we wanted it to be, is because we probably dropped the ball at some point. So your follow-up system and what you have in place for your events is going to be really critical. And we are going to talk about that today. I did send you guys, if you're on our list. This morning, I sent you guys out a brand new worksheet and checklist that we can use for in-person events. That is something that will be included in the description for this video when we upload it to YouTube as well. So let's talk about home events. We've talked about vendor events on this channel. We've talked about virtual events as well. But home events are really important and it's something that you really need to be making sure that you are doing at least once a month, right? This is the tried and true method that built Young Living, literally. This is the thing that built Young Living to a multi-billion dollar company with millions, millions and millions of customers across the world. Home events are the primary driver and have always been the primary driver of growing Young Living. Now, of course, with the, the events of the last few years, a lot of us have been separated from one another. I think that it's with, with spring coming here in the northern hemisphere. Or you know, even if it's not for you, you're heading into fall where you are. I want to encourage you to look at this seasonal change here as sort of an energetic opportunity for you to really shift into gear, into operating in a new way. Let's open our homes back up. Let's get back together. And let's start doing the thing that built this in the first place. There are lots of, of leveraged and smart ways that you can use technology and grow online. But you can also use your technology to make your in-person stuff even more effective. And that's really the, the crux of what I'm talking about here today with you guys. So home events are also the easiest and fastest path to effective sharing, right? So again, people come into your home, they can smell and they can smell the diffuser. They can experience products with you. There's a level of trust that's there because they're in your home. It is such an easy way to get started. And if you've got somebody who you've just gotten started and they're interested in getting their product paid for, or they're interested in growing a business, the easiest way for them to get started is to do the same thing is to pass people over in their home and share. And the reason why this is so much more effective than any other way of sharing is because there is an implied trust. There's a, there's a bond of trust that's implied that takes place when you invite someone into your home. You are implying, I trust you enough to be in my home. And there is a reciprocal trust that happens there psychologically with someone that you're bringing into your home. If you already know them well, then that trust is already a bond, it's already well felt. But for somebody who may not even know you quite so well, that trust is going to grow significantly because you're inviting them into your home and that reciprocation is happening on a psychological level. And what happens when you have greater trust with someone? They're more likely to listen to and take your recommendations, right? So you're going to have better outcomes in terms of sharing Young Living where you have trust built. If you're trying to just build trust on social media and the internet, you can do it, but it takes so much more time. If you can't have someone in your home, you're going to grow that trust tenfold so much more quickly. It's also again, so critical that you be duplicable in this business. And this is the most duplicable way to share and it's the best way to get leverage. Because if you invite a friend over, they can invite friends too. And that trust that happens quickly is being shared between you, your friend, and then your friend, their friends and you. You're actually building a network more quickly there. And then of course, you can turn around and immediately, if somebody say brought a few friends and they've got a friend that wants to buy product, you can tell your friend, hey, real quick, why don't we get you signed up as a brand partner? So that your products might be paid for from the purchases they make, right? You get so much quicker leverage this way. So we can look at home events differently from the other events that we host. And the first way to maybe take a deep sigh of relief here is that home events can be so easy and so simple. There are a million ways that you can make things beautiful and complicated with technology. But having someone over, inviting someone over and putting an oil on them is the easiest, simplest, lowest tech thing you can do. Anyone can do it. It's so easy to do. And it's not weird, right? If you're uncomfortable or you're new and you just don't feel confident in, you know, hosting a class, you know, saying that you're the expert on, you know, removing toxins from the home or talking about Essential Oils 101, because you just started two weeks ago. It's not weird. You don't feel awkward. It's comfortable because it's your home and you're inviting people over to hang out and do things you would do at home. It also requires very little planning. And again, we do have a planner that you can use and I want to share with you at the close of our slides today. The, the actual way that we can go about getting that done, very simply. And then there's no or few tools needed. So we're going to make and keep this easy. But before we get into this, I want to kick this over to Greg and let him show you guys a really, really exciting new feature update in Get Oiling where you can see your results from the emails that you're sending out.
Awesome. Thank you, Ashley. Let me share my screen here. I'll show you this exciting little addition slash improvement. Sure, got the right one here. Okay, cool. So for any of you who've ever wanted to track your delivery and open and click rate and all that, it's been available in Get Oiling for quite some time. If you're not familiar with how to get to that, go under contacts and messages and then click there. And then you'll see anything that was sent to, I think it's more than five contacts, sort of a bulk mail or if it was scheduled in advance, that kind of thing that, that'll show up here. The change however, is not on this screen, but like if you click on one of these, and this works for texting too. But now there's a few graphs that show like your key statistics, as well as a reformatting of the delivery statistics. Previously, it was in kind of a columnar table that was really hard to read and understand. And you had to scroll sideways and all that. This is much more friendly on more devices, including a mobile phone, which of course, more and more people are using. But just to be able to see these key stats at a glance is really, really nice. Cause you can just see them right away. And I mean, this is, this is just a test example. But you know, you'd obviously see this with your own data. If you want to go look in there now. All these numbers were available before down in the, in the tables, but it's just nice, a nice visualization. You know, what percentage of people open, what percentage of people click? Now, this was a little, you know, contrived example here. So these numbers are probably, I mean, delivery should be pretty close to a hundred percent. If not, there's some other issue going on and let us know. We can help you with that. But open rates, you know, depending if you have a pretty small list, it's probably going to be relatively high. Clicking, it really depends on, you know, the click rate is more like if you have content in there that people should click on. You know, sometimes it's just an informative email. People don't click on it so that, you know, don't worry too much about the numbers. But this just gives you some more insight under what's going on. And yeah, so fun little addition. This works on emails. It also works on texting. Text doesn't actually right now track opens. So it's just delivering clicks. And if you use the app notification feature, if you schedule those two, those would also show up here and you'd be able to have those numbers too. Again, there's different numbers, different statistics tracked on either of those. So yeah, fun little addition and it deserves, to make it even more exciting, there's these little cool animation that comes up there too. So anyway, yeah, that's a quick little update and yeah, back over to you, Ashley.
Hey Greg, can you pop that open for just a second? Amanda wanted to know if we're able to see who clicked on what link. And there actually is a way, if you look down here where it's hyperlinked, you can actually see who did what.
Yeah, I, I think if, if you're asking about like, can you see which specific link they clicked on with an email? No, you can't. You can see who clicked, you know, so if they click on here, it'll open it up and show who clicked, but not which link they clicked on, if that's what you're looking for Amanda. So, but yeah, you can at least get some of the data on there and see who's clicking at least.
Yeah. So if they clicked any link that's in the email, it's going to show up there. And Sydney asked if you can see if someone opened the email versus scrolled through it. You're really only going to be able to see if it's opened, delivered and then opened. And obviously what you are hoping that they also do, if you do have a call to action in that email is that they click something, which is something that you want to encourage in your emails because you want the email servers, the senders to actually see that you're someone who is engaging, that's sending stuff that people like to click stuff. But yeah, we don't have a differentiator of what they clicked on. Now, if you are wanting to track something like that and the, you know, and it's fairly consequential for you, I would encourage you to use an automation and, and then have that click be an automation. So whatever the link is, a particular link inside of your email, just code that with an automation so that whoever clicks it is going to be tagged with something and then whatever other actions you're interested in.
Yeah. And one other note about the open rate too. Since Apple introduced their privacy, mail privacy, I don't know, it's been a long, sometime in the last year or so. Anyway, I think that's on by default now for most iOS devices. My understanding is that now like a hundred percent of mail sent to Apple devices or opened on an Apple app will show as opened. So the numbers are not always a hundred percent. So don't get, you know, necessarily hung up too specifically on the numbers. It's more of a barometer of how many people are in there. And just sort of a, something you can measure over time. So that's just something to keep in mind. This, this isn't a hundred percent accurate, whereas the clicks and the deliveries are more accurate. But anyway, it gives me general sense.
Fantastic. Thank you so much Greg. Yet another awesome, awesome update to this system. Just keeps getting easier and easier to use. Alright, so let's get back into this, you guys. Let's talk about how we can make in-person, ideally in-home events. It's very easy so that you can do more of them because it helps to grow your business. So the first thing that we want to do is pick our format. And what that means is, is we're basically going to figure out for ourselves internally, how do we want this party to flow? How do we want, what do we, we want the setup to be, right? So what I want to encourage you to do first is to go with what's normal for your crowd. Now, if you're not someone who normally has people over, keep this super casual or rely on some kind of a fun theme, which we'll talk about, that'll help to kind of guide you and, and create some structure. If you are a party person, go with what usually works for you and the people that you typically invite over. Having a party in your home is having a party in your home. And what I'm going to be sharing with you today is how to have a party in your home that is accentuated with Young Living products, that inspires conversations about Young Living. It is not your typical sit down in a chair with your butt facing me and let's talk about Young Living products and why they're different. And here's Essential Oils 101, not talking about that, talking about have a party with Young Living products. Have conversations and of course, move them toward getting started with you. So this is not your, your old school pitch, right? So I want you to go with what's normal and feels natural for you first and foremost, especially if you're new with this. So if that, whatever that is for you, is it a dinner party? Is it a game night, cocktail hour, pedicure party? Keep it native to you and how you normally do things. Keep it easy, keep it natural. Because again, this doesn't need to be something that you need to expend some great amount of resources on. It needs to be something that is fun for you, right? Because again, as, as we all know, the party itself, the event itself is often not the point at which we see a return, right? This is something that helps to seed your garden for greater harvests in the future, right? So make this something that you can do often, that is simple, that's easy, that's fun. It needs to be, the thing itself needs to be rewarding to you, right? So keep in, be in keeping with that kind of mindset here. And the less formal the format, the easier it is to duplicate. Keep it simple and really honestly, keep it fun. If you aren't a blue personality, make sure you invite some blue friends. Get them involved in planning this with you. Give them some product in exchange, right? Pedicure party, I'm down, right? Pedicure party, mini facials, guys, we, let's, let's brainstorm this. And that's actually what I want to talk about here is to now get clear on the concept. So now you know the format, right? Are we all kind of sitting around on couches together? Do I have dips on the table? Is it a dinner party? Is it a game night, right? Think about how we're going to be set up. Now let's get clear on what the concept is. So make it interesting to a non-oiler, right? So things that are going to kind of go deep into the ethos of, of kind of how we all sort of already live, right? Like the green stuff. If you've got a lot of crunchy friends, then cool, give it a shot, right? But the best thing to do is to make this fun, right? Make it fun and interesting to a non-ooey person. So resist the need to make it a class. We know people need to be educated. My gosh, it's in our hearts and souls and we're screaming out to the world, like, why can't we be different? You've got to think differently. It would be better for you, would be better for all of us, right? Resist that because we, we need to reach people in a way that they are receptive. And class is not always necessarily that, right? So keep it fun, keep it social and let's talk about some ideas. Mini facials, mocktail hour, cocktail hour, if you're into that, make and takes. Jenny says my friends like booze, so we do sip and scans. I love that. Spa night with foot soaks, pedicure parties, right? Think about some ways that you can have fun integrating product. There was a, oh gosh, it was years ago. I cannot remember the brand partner who shared this with me, but she was having a, like a Ningxia wine cocktail kind of party where she made like a, like a Ningxia sangria. And so you could do something like that. It does not have to be totally oil centric or Young Living product centric, but it 100% needs to feature some wow product, right? Just need some wild product there. Ooh, a perfume making party. That's a fabulous theme. And that's actually a good instance for maybe planning and make and take for some like, you know, so you can come and maybe put $20 down and leave with a signature scent. And $20 covers the cost of, the cost of, of product, right? You could absolutely do something like that. Or if you want to use smaller bottles, right? Little, little tiny, tiny roller bottles, then you could absolutely do something like that as well. So once you've got your concept and your format ready, it's time to invite. So effective invitations start with asking the right people to come first. This is just like getting started with Young Living. When you first got started, who were you told to reach out to? Your closest friends and family, the people who, if you called them right now, they would pick up the phone because it was you. That's the same thing we want to do here. Start with your closest people. A, because these are folks who probably already know that you're a Young Living brand partner. And whether they are interested in buying product or not, they're someone who will support you regardless, right? Invite those people first. Invite the fun people because this is a party, right? So make sure that we're starting with who's closest to us first. So who do you invite to your parties? Your best friends, obviously, your best friends, your close family, people who you like to hang out and have a good time with, whoever that is. Make sure when you're inviting these people, that this is a personal invitation. You're not creating a Facebook or Get Oiling event invite and then mass emailing or texting it. That's not personal. We're going to send a personal invitation. You're going to say something to the effect of, I'm having a get-together on whatever date at my place with mini facials and mocktails. Think you can make it? Cause if they say no, ask them when they're usually free because you want them to come to the next one. If they say no, ask them, hey, this is something that I'm using to, you know, get more exposure for the work that I'm doing. Do you know anybody that might like to come and they can help you invite? Start with leverage. People who love you, care about you, they care about your success. Ask that favor if they can't come. Ask them first. They are your honored guests, right? If you get a yes from them, get a commitment. Ask them to bring an ingredient or a party supply. If you get a yes, don't just stop at yes, because obviously you know, many people will RSVP yes to something and then they don't show up for whatever reason. But if they're the person who is tasked to bring ice, then they're coming. If they're the person who is tasked to bring cookies or napkins or whatever, they're coming, right? So ask them to bring something. This is a huge, huge difference maker. If you want people to actually show up and hold to their commitments. Who does this? Have you guys done this before? It's such a cool subtle trick that I learned years ago and it will absolutely skyrocket the actual confirmations of people who walk in the door. Another thing that you can do again with your closest friends is to offer a bonus for them, to bring a friend. Offer it to them first. Think about it like this. You, you have in, in the center of your circle, there is your party. And the people that are going to get exposed to it first, those are going to be your closest people. And they're also going to be the first people who know that if they bring a friend, they're going to get an extra whatever, right? They're going to get a bonus something. Offer that to them and you can be more explicit with the people who know you best. Because you can say, I'm going to be sharing some of my business product at this party and I'm actually able to give you bonus product for bringing friends. So who do you want to bring? You can pick out the thing that you want, right? That, that I can give you, right? So you can say something to the effect of, I'll be featuring and incorporating some of my products that night and I'm giving away bonus product to take home for anyone who brings a friend. Anyone come to mind for you? Ask directly. Remember, you can't accomplish this by simply sending out a mass invite. It needs to be a conversation. If you're a phone person, make this a phone call. If you're a text person, obviously make sure that you're texting. I don't recommend DMs for this, direct messages on social media platforms. That's, I mean, I don't think that's how you probably communicate with your closest of friends. I'm talking about the people who you call and text. These are the people that have your phone. These are the people that have your phone number, right? Okay, so now we're going to expand beyond our closest people because obviously we do want to have um as as big a party as makes sense. So what we want to do is, of course, after we get a couple of core friends committed, we want to then expand to. Our friends who are maybe not as close, uh and of course, uh the contacts that we have as well that we might want to invite. So this, if it's a home event, which I really believe it should be, try to keep your list curated, right? Quality interactions, a smaller crowd is going to be a better, it's going to create a better outcome for you. Than just having quantity for quantities sake, right? It's better to have a handful of people who really have a great time together uh and and create a nice vibe. Where um there's trust developing here. Uh, just make sure that this is really just something that feels like a lovely fun party. Because remember, we're not just having a party to sell product. This isn't about product. It's about growing and developing trust with a greater network of people. Will they be exposed to product? Yes. Will they have an opportunity to learn more and purchase product? Totally, but that's not what they're going to experience. They're going to experience the fun thing that you've set up. And they're going to learn that they have an opportunity to ask you questions, to learn more, and to even buy the product that they've used today if they want to. And you've also now got that person moving forward on your list to be notified of other events coming up, right? Because again, this isn't about, you know, seeing a full growth and plant, a plant cycle, you know, from seed to harvest. In an evening, that's not usually how this stuff works. It really is about seeding your garden here. So keep your invitations to the people in your network personal. Again, don't make it a mass invite, right? Don't just blast the link to your your event page out there. But you do want to, once somebody has said yes, you do want to give them the opportunity to share the link with people that they're inviting. Because it's going to do a better job explaining the event than they will, right? So that way they can, of course, take advantage of any incentives that you're offering to bring a friend. And you can post about the event, but again, don't post on social media to the link that you've created. Please don't do that. What you want to do is say, hey, I'm having uh, you know, a pedicures and mocktails party at my place. Uh, if that's something that you guys sound interested in, uh shoot me a message and I can get you the details, right? That's the extent of what you want something like that to look like. Now let's talk about what happens during the event, during the party itself, right? So sharing and presenting tips during the party. So first mingle, be a host, set the vibe. This is your party. Allison said over here in the chat, the key is not making it feel icky. Yes, absolutely. So having a potluck this Sunday with new friends, the inviting commitment is already there, just a reminder needs to go out. That's fantastic. You've got diffusers going, but you know what? Because the diffusers are going, somebody is going to say, what is that smell? And now you've got an opportunity to talk. Yes, absolutely. So you're actually going even a little, Alison, more um. You're going even a little gentler with the approach here. You're you're just kind of having fun and allowing oils to be present, right? You do have varying degrees of this. If if this is how you want to get started, just have a potluck and have a diffuser going, by all means do that. You can also be strategic without getting icky, right? As Alison said, so the first thing that you want to do to make sure that that happens is to be present because it's a party. So behave like you would at any other party because that's what it is. And when it's time to start whatever the activity is, make sure that you're addressing the crowd appropriately. So basically what you're going to do is is welcome everyone, introduce yourself. Uh, obviously, you know, you're but you're going to say something to the effect of, if you don't know me. Because yeah, then that's of course, if there are people there that don't know you, right? If you don't know me, this is who I am. Uh, I do tell them what you do, tell them, and and use your, if you're in the Brand My Business workshop, we have a who I help and house statement. That we uh develop in there. Use that who I help and house statement. So hey, this is who I am. I help this kind of person. Uh, get these kind of outcomes. I'm really excited that you're here today. Uh, let's, you know, let's get started with what we're doing, right? Um, you can obviously, of course, mention that you're going to be sampling products that you sell, but that there's no pitch. I think that going at the outset and letting people know that you're not going to be asking for their wallets is an extreme trust builder out of the gates. People are going to feel more comfortable, they're going to be more receptive, where you say, uh, because after, if you use my who I help and house statement. You're going to say, and by the way, you know, some of the products that I use to help my clients uh are going to be used tonight. I'm not asking you to purchase anything. If you have questions, feel free to ask me. And then, of course, you could also let them know that you offer personalized consults and you can tell them the kinds of things that you can help them with, right? Based on on, you know, who's there, the theme of the event, or just generally who you help and help. You can then carry on with your events and just really focus on connecting with your guests. Connecting your guests with each other, making sure that everyone's having a great time. And then again, if you're using some kind of a theme where product is being used. You can take that opportunity to maybe demonstrate the use of a product. That's a fantastic opportunity to just seed a little bit of information. But it doesn't have to be in some kind of, you know, Vanna White, I'm holding up a product and let me tell you about it QVC kind of way, right? You don't have to do it like that. Um, you you can just simply say, you know, here's the product, here's how you're going to use it, here's some other interesting uses for it, here, try this. Right? And then just keep the party going. It's not about positioning products so front and center that they feel like they're being pitched. It's about simply having a great time and allowing the products to facilitate that, right? And then before they leave this event, bam bam, always know when you're going to get together next. At the very least, don't let them leave empty-handed. You could have them take away some kind of a sample. There's lots of really creative, effective and like cost-effective ways to do this. Uh, you can, of course, uh, if you have anything that's printable, that maybe has links to the website or QR code. Uh, or something to that effect, whatever it is, don't let them leave empty-handed. They need to walk out of your place with a thing in their hand. That is a reminder of what they did tonight and um and of course, you know, has some kind of way. That they could get into other additional information from you. And of course, ideally, what you're going to want to be able to do is network from this event. Offer those consults, offer an opportunity to work together with them beyond the event. Have a scan session, sit down and and have a consult with them. You you could have started with a brand partnership today and you could do this without any complicated anything. You don't need to have a subscription to this or that. You can simply say, I'd love to sit down with you, learn more about your goals. And help you get started on your journey to getting them um achieved, right? And then all you have to do is sit down, listen to them and recommend product, get them started, right? Really, really simple. Alright, so now let's talk about the tech. Uh, the tech can be very sophisticated. We can also go very, very simple. Let's go sophisticated first. I created a planner checklist for you. Uh, Greg has already included that in the chat here. We'll have it in the description for the recording. And then, of course, it was sent out to you guys via email prior to the call today. So what we're basically doing here is we're planning this event, uh getting all of the details in place. And then we're going to be creating a follow-up plan and a campaign. And then an event tying it all together and allowing yourself the ability to RSVP your people. Or have them RSVP themselves. And then, of course, for email or text reminders to go out before your event. Reminding them, just automated, reminding them of the event, uh where it is, all of those details. Uh, and of course, giving uh your people an opportunity to also have a link to share this event with people that they might want to bring along with them. Alright, so if you've seen this training that we did on vendor events, we have a similar workbook uh and checklist. Or if you've seen this one about online events, we did this one very recently about hosting regular online virtual Young Living events. Then this is all going to look pretty familiar to you and you're going to know what to do with this. But if you're new to all this tech stuff and you just want to host an event tomorrow, right? If you just, you're like, you know what, let me just get this done. We don't have that much longer uh to get these events planned and executed. And get credit for them toward the Kona challenge. And I just need to get something set up. Here's the click and dirty. You can get this done today within about twenty minutes. Alright, so the simplified approach is going to be create an event and get oiling for your party. You're going to put in the date, the details, yada, yada. You don't have to make an image for it. You certainly could, but you don't have to. Then you can, once the event is up, you can go in and enter your friends manually when they say yes. Or you can give them the link and have them do it. Just make sure they actually do it. If they said yes, if you're giving them the link. Set a reminder for yourself. If they haven't done it yet, you're going to do it for them. And then remember to add notes to their contact cards, right? Once somebody signs up for something or you add them manually or via your VO file, they're in your contacts and get oiling. Make sure that when you interact with them about this party, that you add notes to their cards. So that when you're following up, you know what to talk about. And then, of course, you want to give yourself a to-do on the contact. Just to make sure that you are following up with them appropriately, uh to make sure that they are going to be at the event. And then, of course, any follow-up that you want to pursue after the event concludes. So let me know in the chat, what event are you going to host next? I see Alison is going to have a potluck with some diffusers running. Who else? What, tell us more about what you are going to host next. What is your next event? I think a game night would be fabulous. That would be a really fun thing if you're a playing games person. Um, that's definitely one of the things that we do with my family. That would be a very natural thing if I invited people over. I had game night. And uh, and we had some diffusers going or, you know, maybe there was, you know, some mocktails with Ningxia. Maybe some oils, maybe a lavender lemonade, right? What is that going to look like for you? So Adrian, who is a yoga teacher, is going to do oils for yogis. Uh, Amanda's going to do a spring cleaning DIY at a local salt cave. Hello, that's awesome. A pain DIY at a senior center. Alison's going to have a lunch and learn set up later this month. Fantastic. I'm so excited for you guys. Let's get this going. So excited for you guys to get into events and hosting them. Because it is such an effective way to grow your business. So there are a couple of questions and um I want to make sure. Uh, that I've got that. And then also, we had. Let me see, Carolyn, you had signed up for a work review, so we'll bring you out here shortly as well. Jolene says, uh, how would you suggest we track the invites? So if you are um, if you're using the Get Oiling Events Manager, there is actually a way to do this. Let me go show you here real quick. Pure pure perfume, let me say that again, pure perfume, Mother's Day roller balls and mocktails is Carolyn's next. Um, next class, that's awesome. Appetizer potluck party with best friends, AFT group session. Fantastic, you guys. Keep them coming. Alright, so let's go look real quick in events. Uh, let me just make this maybe a little easier to see. Because my screen is huge. It's gonna let me, there we go. Okay, so um, Jolene, under events. Once you've created an event, I should be in, let me not share for just a second. I'm in the wrong account. I thought I was in Jane account. Uh, so there's a way to do this and you can learn more about it if you click the little question mark guy in the lower uh right-hand side of your screen and you type in events. Uh, there's definitely some articles that walk through this, but let me just show you really quick um how you can do this. I think Jane has an event that we can use for this purpose. Okay, here we go. So here's our um aroma freedom group session. So if we, let me actually go in here and modify the event. Just make it something further in the future. And then you can actually see when you're in your events manager, there's an invite button here. Now, this is actually a way for you to send an email out to all of your contacts, to some of your contacts. Or just to one. And so what I would do is actually reach out to someone if you have um invited them. Uh, and uh, and you would actually, after like getting their yes, you're going to send them the link to put their information in. And so what you would do is you would search for your person, uh and then you would, let me just go ahead and find. Um, here we go. We're going to mail this contact. And we're going to, how does this work, Greg? If we click the invite button. Oh, here we go, invite selected. I was doing it wrong. Would you like to add one contact to your event? You go, okay. That's what we do. Perfect. So this is where you can actually go in and modify what you're sending. And so everyone that you've selected here, um, oops. Everyone that you've selected and that you've invited is going to actually show up in your invited list. So let me go ahead and go to invite selected and then I'm going to send mail to this contact. You're going to obviously want to modify what that says, but when you return to your event, you can actually then see that this person has been invited. And then, of course, you can see that I haven't responded. You can also um view the contact here. So when I RSVP, you can actually see um what I say. So you can track attendees that way. Good question. Thank you. Okay. Let me bring you out to talk about what you're working on this week, Carolyn. Let me find you in here real quick. Perfect. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you so much.
Yeah, how can we help today?
Um, two things, actually. I did create an April newsletter. And I was about to send it out and I can't find it now.
Um, okay.
Do that. And in the newsletter, um, there was a part that I was customizing and it looked as if it was in red. And I couldn't get it to not be in red. Um, okay. So that's one thing. And then the other thing is, on my website, I have a fourteen days of self-care campaign. But it's old and I would like to take it out and I'd like to put in the seven days of positive view. I don't know how to get them in and out.
Okay, alright, we can do that. Um, so is is this the email? The the newsletter or is this, is it something different?
No, it should be somewhere in newsletters that are saved because I went to. Um. I went to Grow Workspace and I saved it and then I modified it.
Okay, is it this one?
I know, that's the, with the BBB.
Hmm. Maybe that's in campaigns. Let's actually just go up here. And do you do you know if the title is April?
It should be newsletter, yeah.
Okay.
Well, maybe it's that one, one of those, the April two thousand twenty-three template.
The campaigns? Okay, yeah. So let's go see, because it looks like there's two of them.
No.
Here we go. Um, okay, so hello, April. Is this it?
Let's just, if you keep scrolling, I will know. Okay, that's just the template. So let's look at the other one and see if that's the one that I adjusted.
Looks like it.
Okay, so this is one. So let's get rid of that other one and then we'll use later and we'll use this one.
Okay.
So see if there's the red part. Where I. Um, okay, so that's where I wanted to put the seven days for the most, oh, so I tried to put in, is the sway link, is that correct?
Um, I mean, this is definitely how you can, you you can embed a sway this way. Um, what I would do is, is this actually the um, let me see.
I just wanted to have a picture of it and then they clicked on it and then they went to it.
Okay, yeah, if you want a picture of it, then what you would want to do is is uh grab a screenshot. So I'm gonna, unless actually, they may have an image, right? This uh seven days to a more positive view, they may actually have an image of this that that they are sharing with you, that Grow Workspace may be sharing with you. But what I'm going to do is just grab a screenshot of this. And then.
They would rather see a picture than a link, right?
Oh, for sure. Yeah, absolutely. So um, so yeah, we'll pop a, the image in right here. That's a screenshot that we just took. Uh, that's going to be here, I believe. Definitely recommend that you swap this out with one from them. If uh, if they have a seven days to a more positive view image, that's going to be a better fit than this screenshot. So I'm going to align this over to the left and then what we're going to do is copy this link. And that's this guy right here and just grab this. Okay, and then all you have to do is just under insert link for the image, you just paste it in, open that in a new tab. And now we can, we can get rid of that one. So um, so yeah, what I would do. We can get rid of that one. So um, so yeah, what I would do is after you go into your workspace and you figure out um. Their image, then you're just gonna click this, replace, and then just swap it out with it with the better image from them. So we can say, uh, you know, click the image below to learn more. And I'm also going to. Unbolt some of this. There we go. Okay, so um if you wanna change uh color and and formatting and stuff, all you have to do is just highlight the text that you wanna change. And before it was red and that was just, you know, what Grow Workspace does to draw your eye to it, to remind you that you need to make this your own. Uh, but you can simply select that same text, go to this text color and then you can swap out with whatever color you like.
Maybe I didn't have it highlighted.
Yeah, it might be. So um, are you wanting to keep the gardening and oils there or no?
Well, there's no link to it. I, it's just there. So let's take, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So, okay, so I think if you just keep scrolling there, did, maybe I did get it out of the red. Oh, no, that's the part.
Yeah, so we just wanna highlight all of that. I'm gonna unbolt it and then we're gonna make it black.
Okay.
There we go.
Didn't have it highlighted.
Yeah.
So now I'm ready to go with that.
Perfect.
Get rid of the other one so I don't get confused.
Right. So that's going to be the first one.
Uh, not the BBB.
Right.
The newsletter one.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's this one. Let me go double check real quick. Yeah, it's the one that just says, have it, hello, April. So I'm just gonna go into details and delete from here. Okay. Great. So you should be good to go to send that one.
So now I'm gonna, I'm, I'm going to send that one to my team. So we won't send it. Can you show me? So I wanna filter my contacts as team.
Yes. So what we, what you'll do is you're gonna go April twenty twenty-three, look for it in your campaigns and then you can click send. And then you're going to filter for team and then you're gonna send it.
Okay, so you do send, then you do filter and then you do send again. Okay, I think I was doing that in the wrong order too.
Yeah, the other thing that you could, of course, do is to go to your contacts and filter your contacts and then choose actions and send. There are multiple ways to do it. Another one that you can do here is to uh is to click here, send a campaign, send to team, right? You can actually choose from the the dropdown, but you just basically wanna make sure that you're selecting that campaign and that you're selecting the filter for team.
Oh, thank you so much.
Yeah, for sure.
Do we have time to go into the my page?
Yeah, for sure.
That should be on my um. I think it's on my homepage.
Okay. Alright, let's take a look at it published first and then, of course, we can. Get into the editing. Alright, is there something in particular we're looking for?
Yeah, we're looking for the um, the free, not that one. The self-love, fourteen days of self-love. I wanna take that one out.
Okay.
And I wanna put in the seven days to a positive you.
Okay, great. Let's uh, let's go see where this is pointing.
So I don't know how to mount.
Yeah, so this is going to. It's not loading. Do you have a page um that's, let me find, let me see if I can find it in your system. There we go. You do have a custom page. This one is where you're going now. Okay, and what are you wanting to send them to instead?
Well, actually, you know what? I have to do something else. Let's, let's leave that one there for now and let's go to what needs to come out is.
Okay. What are we looking for next?
The makeup one. Uh, no, it's not there. Let's continue on with this, what we were gonna do. Sorry to mix up there.
Sure, no problem.
So we're gonna take out the self-love.
Okay, and and what are we going to replace it with?
The seven days to a positive you.
Okay, so this is going to be, do you have an image for it already?
I I don't. Uh, I can use one of mine.
Okay, so that is something that you are going to want to change here. Um, and then uh, you're obviously, of course, won't going to wanna change the wording here, but what you're wanting to do is make sure that you're sending them to the appropriate place, right?
Right.
So, yeah, so what we're gonna do, I always like to copy the text here because it's going to change it when we search for what we're looking for here. Um, and you said this is called, what now? What where are we sending them? Do you have a page on your website uh for the the other thing that you want to send them to?
Hmm, no, I don't. I just thought I could put the little class in there.
Okay, and where is the class hosted?
In Grow Workspace.
Okay, and is that a, is that an email class? Is it a sway? Um, do you wanna have people opt in before they get access to it?
Well, I think it's one just like this. It's what we put in the newsletter.
Got you. So what you'll wanna do is, um, cause it doesn't look like, what's it called again?
Seven days to a positive, more positive you.
Okay, it doesn't look like you have um claimed that bundle from Grow Workspace just yet.
Okay, so that's, you first then, I have to claim the bundle.
Mm-hmm, yep. And then just make sure that you have the the page that they give you, if it's gonna be similar to that fourteen days. Um, like they they probably have a page similar to this one that um, that they're giving you for the seven days. Uh, and then once uh you have this modified to your liking, if you're doing any changes to it, to the seven days one that they give you in that bundle. Then on your homepage, what you're gonna do is is swap out your image. You'll swap out this copy and then you're going to, right here on this button, go to edit link. Gonna copy, command C, right here, and then I'm gonna go to this dropdown here and we're gonna find that seven days page. Uh, just like you have that fourteen days page here, you'll have a seven days one from that bundle that you claim. And you'll be able to select that, just make sure that your text goes back to, yes, this is for me, click update and save, and then you're good to go.
Okay, so let's leave it as it is now and I'll try and work with that.
Yeah. That should work just fine. Yeah, and I think we we caught a, I I don't think that the page was redirecting properly before, so let's scroll and just make sure. That it's actually sending them to the page. Yes, there we go. Perfect. So um, so yeah, once you claim that bundle, then you should be able to just simply swap out the image, the copy and uh, and then just send them to that page. Instead of the fourteen days of self-love one.
And in the newsletter, does that one, when we click on that one, does that one go to it?
Uh, let's uh, let's go see. Are we, are you talking about a newsletter link on your homepage or are you talking about the newsletter we were just working on?
That we just sent.
Okay.
We would get ready to send. Because we inserted that.
Okay, so we've got our image. Here we go. Uh, it's going to a sway link. This um, cause you had the sway link here. Um, we could, we could set it up to, like, we could send them to the sway link straight from your website, but if Grow Workspace has a bundle like that um. The 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 fourteen days one that you have right now, then they'll actually, that that would be a better path to choose because then you're actually collecting a lead uh before they get the information.
Good. Thank you for your time. I so appreciate it.
Absolutely. We're excited to have you here. You're doing great work and I look forward to having you back.
Thank you.
Alright, Allison asks, how do you deal with the color changes when changing a link? I find the color only changes when you hover, when you hover, uh, so it makes it difficult to know it's a clickable link. So I normally change the color to one of the blue colors, but I feel like there must be a better way. So in your fonts and colors in your system, you actually have your defaults set up. However, if you are importing content from Grow Workspace, for example, like what you just saw, and you are changing from their red uh to your default colors. Uh, then then you may, you know, you you may find some issues there and and in that case, you're going to wanna change the body of the font. To your primary font body color that you normally use. That would be a manual thing that you select, like I showed you with Carolyn's site. Uh, or Carolyn's email, but what you would do for the link uh is to manually go and select that and apply that color that you want. Um, if you want to have, just in your regular day-to-day emails, your your colors show up a particular way. You can change the defaults on that in your uh colors and fonts right here under your website settings. And so this will actually show you that this is what a link looks like, but when you hover, it changes to this color. And uh, and you can make those changes uh to have them show up however you want to on your website. They can be uh really subtle, like what you just saw, or they could be very. Um, very bold and vibrant. You can go from pink to yellow if you want to. It's totally up to you. Okay, without spending too much time in brand power, do you have three recommendations for homepages that people should be pointed to? I have mine going to a different, you know, like Facebook, Google, but uh, I'm wondering if this is something that should be changed or especially the same. So. In my opinion, the best place to send somebody from social media is to a page that is very clearly pointed toward them putting their name and email on something. So while you have a website and the homepage of your website is important and can do a lot of heavy lifting for you, if you've got a great lead magnet offer, like prominently placed up at the top. Your best bet in sending traffic to a link on your website off of your, like, from from now on your website is actually to send them to a landing page. Or a page like that fourteen days one that we were just looking at, that uh is solely focused on capturing their information. So um, this is not hard science. Uh, so uh, generally speaking, uh, you're gonna want to. Keep something as it is for, you know, sixty to ninety days, kinda see how it's working. And uh, and and then, of course, reevaluate from there, whether or not you feel like you might wanna swap that thing out for something else. Having, for instance, a a landing page or a page that offers a sign up for your newsletter is one of the primary things that you should be placing prominently in places where people are hearing from you. Um, because you wanna be promoting your list um in a in a primary way. That would really be at the top for me, followed by any kind of lead generating offer that you might have. And then followed third place by that, by just the homepage of your website. And of course, if you're on something like Instagram uh or Twitter or something like that, having a link in bio page is going to be um above all of those. Because that's sort sort of your like mini website on the phone. It's got a great little sort of directory feel to it and can get people to where they need to go quickly. One of those places would be a landing page, the top of a funnel, absolutely, because your goal is to get people onto your list. So that you can make better friends, so you can build more trust, so that they can take your recommendations and get started with Young Living. So um, let's see, there's, so Allison, you might want to reference the um email marketing mastery course, I know you have access to. Uh, in the member area, you're gonna, you're gonna find some intel about that there. And of course, we do have. Uh, several newsletter trainings on our YouTube channel that you checked out too. So thank you guys for your fantastic questions and your participation today. Thanks again to Greg for making this system awesome. And uh, yeah, we'll be back here same time next week. Have a great week, everybody. Stay cool and let's have a party, alright? Bye.